Order. I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with one addition. I'd like to add 5.1 for other business to allow time for recognition.
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting minutes, or, meeting agenda is approved. We'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from the December 27th, 2022 meeting. Anyone have any corrections, additions?
No, I've no, nothing.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Hearing none, minutes approved. And with that, we will move on to, it's item four, but I think it might be labeled item five in our packet. Variance request, general regulations for detached accessory structure placement near to frontline and primary structure at 19558 Jefferson Street Northeast for Gary Jolakowski. Erin, please start us off.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission, I apologize for the item number mistake. We had some items on the agenda that came off, so it just didn't get caught in the process. I'm gonna try and get to the map of the location here before I start in on the presentation so that our audience can have a concept of general area of what we're talking about The City of East Bethel received a variance request from Gary Jolakowski of 19558 Jefferson Street Northeast for a request to place a detached structure nearer the frontline than the primary structure. This property is located in our rural residential zoning district and is located in the Wagamon Woods subdivision. The property owner is requesting the variance to place a detached structure closer to the street than his primary structure. Zoning Appendix A General Regulations, Section 142F states that no accessory building or detached private garage shall be located nearer the front line than the principal building except when the lot is three acres or greater and the existing principal building is located a minimum of 200 feet from the front lot line. Then the accessory building or detached private garage may be located closer to the front lot line than the principal dwelling, but not closer than 50% of the principal dwelling setback. Mr. Jolakowski's property is 2.01 acres with the primary structure setback of approximately 135 feet from the front property line. This request does not meet the criteria set forth allowed the structure, to allow the structure to be placed closer to the road, so a variance would be necessary to place the detached accessory structure in his desired location. The considerations for a variance require the planning commission to consider a three-factor test for practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonable-ness, which means that the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. It does not mean that the land cannot be put to reasonable use whatsoever without the variance. As an example, if the variance applicant for a building is too close to the lot line and it does not meet the setback standards, the first focus factor is whether the request placed building is reasonable. In this case, the property owner is requesting, at putting the detached building, the accessory structure, in which he may keep his vehicles, boats, classic cars, and/or general storage. This use is listed as an accessory use by the city code for the rural residential, single-family zoning district. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to his property and not caused by the landowner himself. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of the particular piece of property, that is, to the land and not the personal characteristics or preferences of the landowner. When considering a variance for a building to encroach or intrude into a setback, the focus of this factor is whether there is anything physically unique about a particular piece of property, such as sloping, topography, or other unnatural features like wetlands or trees. In this case, the property is unique in that it is pie-shaped, which does limit the buildable, available area in the rear and the side yard for new construction. There are topographical challenges limiting the placement and orientation of the newly proposed detached accessory structure. This wood, this, excuse me, this lot is wooded with two to four-foot elevation changes from the front lot line to the rear lot line. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure will be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. For example, when thinking about a variance for an encroachment into a setback, the focus is how particularly the building will look closer to the lot line, and if that it fits the, in with the character of the area. In this case, there are multiple properties in this subdivision with detached accessory structures which are closer to the front lot line of the property than the principal structure. The proposed detached accessory structure will not encroach on other required setbacks of the property. The construction of a new detached accessory structure will also maintain the character of the neighborhood by providing an enclosed structure in which the property owner can store vehicles, screening them from adjacent properties, and standing tree growth between the proposed detached accessory structure and the front property line will screen it from view of the public roadway, therefore not altering the essential character of the neighborhood. It is city staff recommendation that the planning commission hold a public hearing and recommend approval to the city council for a variance for a placement of a detached structure nearer to the front line, front lot line than the primary structure with the conditions outlined in Resolution 2023-08.
Thank you, Erin. Seeing this is calling for a public hearing at this time, I'll go ahead and call the public hearing open. Any residents who wish to speak on this behalf or make comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll address any of the questions after the public forum. If you'd like to come up and speak, sir, please state.
I'm just, I'm a resident in the area.
Yep, if you could, please, just for the record, state your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Guy White South. I'm at 715-198th Avenue Northeast, which is in this position down here.
Okay.
There's a six, I have no objection to their building. It's, they do have recreational vehicles and classic cars that I can see when I, I walk the neighborhood, and I can see that they could use an accessory building, and that the location of the house and where I kind of see where their anticipated location would be, would be beneficial to their property. I guess that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you for your feedback. Any other residents wishing to speak on this? Seeing none at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public forum. Oh, I'm sorry, if you, if you want, if you want to speak on behalf of it, you can. I'll go ahead and reopen the public forum. So, yep, come on up to the podium. So, and just again, for the record, the public forum has been reopened.
I just want to say, I built my house there as a carpenter 28 years ago, and part of, I had always wanted a garage, but part of what happened is I had two large trees on that side of the yard that were struck by lightning, and that created, after that, basically every two years, I lost at least two trees from oak wilt because it started from there. And if you look, well, that one showed, I think it's, one of, one of the pictures shows all these tree trunks laying down because I had so many trees die, and, and in that spot, it was actually the first spot that got hit was the trees right there. So, they died naturally from oak wilt. I did not take them down because I wanted to. I didn't want to take any trees down. When I built my house, you could barely see the house from the street, and now with all the trees that have died, it's, it's right there.
Coincidental, good use of the space, certainly.
Yeah, and so that space is like ideal because it's, it's open already, it's off to that side, it's a little forward, the building would be just a little forward from what they say, the corner of it, and then the back corner, almost not at all, and it's, you know, it's just, I do need an accessory building, right? But you've got some cars, so, and boats, and my son got a boat there too, and all that. So, is that a proposal?
Yes, that is the proposed structure.
And there is woods in this area, kind of woods and trees in this area, and then that's open, and then there's woods right tight back here. So, I mean, if I would not put it there, I would have to take more trees down, and, and I just, I don't want to take them, trees down.
Yep. Great. Thank you, Gary. Thanks, thank you for, for your assessment. The public forum is still open, so if you'd like to come up, again, you're welcome to do so.
Once and again, my name's Guy White South, and I just want to support what he's saying is that they've taken excellent care of this, this property. There's tons of trees that they had to take down, and they've done a lot of landscape work in there to, for drainage.
Yep, if you come back to the podium.
Ground cover and stuff. So, I, I just want to support his statement, that's all.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And just so everyone knows, when we're asking folks to come up to the podium and speak into the microphone, majority of this is so, anyone watching online or at home does get the ability to hear you, and if you've ever, if you haven't watched, I encourage people to watch, and if you have, and you know when people aren't at the podium, it can be really difficult to hear what they say, so just please keep that in mind. With that being said, any other comments in regards to tonight's public hearing? I'll go ahead and reclose the public hearing at this time.
The other thing about coming to the podium is that minutes are taken from the recording, and so if you're like way back here and you're not being picked up on the mic, then it's hard for them to put the message together.
Yeah, the folks at Time Saver appreciate that. With that being said, I would entertain any motions at this time, whether it be discussion or, or motion to approve or not.
I will make a motion to grant the variance for the placement of the structure nearer to the front property line for the property located at 19558 Jefferson Street Northeast, pin number 19-33-23-31-0003 for Resolution Number 2023-08, with the deletion of the first bullet point of the first whereas, where it says is a reasonable use of the property. The first bullet point is a, was the, it's, it's an extra, an extra line from the second bullet point. They're, they're a virtual copy, but it looks like the first one should be deleted, so I'm, I'm asking as part of the resolution that the first bullet point of the first whereas be removed.
This is the resolution, Randy?
Yes, it's, it's the actual resolution, which is in our packet, and my apologies if, if the actual resolution has changed since then.
No problem, it'll be straight before it runs, runs the city council.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I would second that motion. Any discussion regarding the motion?
Just that when Randy was giving his motion, he asked for, or asked that it be approved, and I'm just saying that we have to recommend it to the council that they approve it. I mean, that's the only thing, just to make sure that that's in our motion.
Some amendment to the motion to, or do you amend your motion?
If you wish, I will amend my motion that it is granting the resolution to be forwarded to city council for approval. Will that meet your standards?
Yes, thanks.
No, absolutely.
And I would still second, so. So with that, any, we have a motion and a second, do we want to have discussion on, on the detached accessory structure variance?
I'll just say that I, I drove by, and it is a beautiful property, and yes, I can totally see the need to have a place to put all of your outdoor vehicles and everything, and I think it definitely would be fitting. I saw that there were also multiple neighbors that also had similar setup as well.
My second neighbor down the business, to the home, to the front, and the fourth neighbor in the circle, business all the way to the front too, and I don't know if they got there and seemed, but they didn't need any of those requirements. And when I got my set.
Sir, sorry, thank you. Yep, you're good. So, I, I would second those words, Karen, yes, it looks like a good fit for, for where it's at, I would have no issues with this.
I have a comment based on what was just said and what was in the third factor about multiple properties having this situation. I don't think we've approved variances for that in other situations that weren't, I mean, I don't remember any coming before us, so that's kind of curious if there are a number of other properties like that.
Yeah, I would.
You see that it's in front of the wall?
Right. I'm not disputing that there are, I'm just, it's, I don't think they've come through the variance process.
Yep, and that'd be something we'd have to ask the, there's, there's a strong possibility that whoever was interpreting city code at the time when the application came in might be interpreting code differently than the current person who's sitting in the chair when the application comes in, so that might explain a little bit why you're maybe seeing some things that you may not have seen before. And/or another explanation is they may have been built prior to a change in code, and so it may have been approved at the time. The other possibility is, and I, I can't speak for the one that's on the screen there, but they could be, some of the ones that we're referencing might be more than 200 feet off of the right-of-way as well, which would then permit them to do it without even having to get a variance. So there are some different factors that might explain why. Yeah. But I would say, if we need to look into the history, I would say we should reach out to staff on that, see what's going on if there is an issue.
Probably not a huge priority.
That's what I was saying, my leisure. And honestly, having a detached accessory structure helps give a storage place for recreational vehicles and alternative vehicles, which helps with code enforcement by not having more than five vehicles on a piece of property, so there are a number of ways to look at this. Reasonable-ness, certainly. Any other comments before we call for the vote?
Yes.
Mr. Plissots.
Looking at the plan for, for where the accessory structure is going to be, I don't, I don't see anything in there that shows where the driveway or, or how you're going to access this accessory structure is, is, can I assume that the shortest section facing the house will be the garage door?
Yes, there's nothing in front of it there.
Thank you.
And, and then my next question is, I believe this is a dirt driveway going all the way up to the house, and I'm assuming that you're going to continue with that dirt driveway over to the accessory structure. Would that be correct?
Yes, I am going to eventually do the driveway as, not the garage area at all, I want to just go here to that accessory building.
Okay, so let it be noted that the owner stated that he was going to leave it as dirt for now, but he plans to update it later. His driveway is concrete or bitmice. I guess, I had a question about it. I, I know that you, I know that the ordinance was passed after you built the house that, you know, you needed to make it a concrete or bitmice driveway, or if the driveway is longer than 150 feet, which I don't think that this would be because there's special requirements for fire department access.
So our code, if I may, Randy.
Well, go ahead.
Obligates the homeowner of new construction to pave or use bituminous surface, concrete or asphalt for the first 75 feet after an improved surface roadway for new construction. We can't obligate existing construction to put in a 75-foot apron or driveway. Our fire regulations were currently under review of the ordinance because there's been an update to fire code, and if a road and/or driveway services two or more properties, the driveway is required to be a fire road. If it services less than two, it's not required to meet fire code standard under the new 2021, 2022 fire code. So our ordinance is in the process of revision right now.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Yeah, I, I was curious whether you were planning to put in any, another driveway, which you're allowed to do, but that answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, I think my conversation with the applicant was to use the existing driveway and then just make a left turn with what's already there and not, not add a second access at all to the building.
Okay.
Thank you for noting the residents' comments, too. Anyone else?
I would say after 28 years living there in that house, I mean, you've got a neighbor from, you know, block and a half away who's here to support you, I'd imagine, you know, the surrounding neighbors who are immediately butted up to your property would have said something at this point if they had any dispute with what you planned to do, and I'm sure, you know, like you were saying, having an actual structure to put your boats and cars in is gonna, you know, look better than what you currently got. Google Maps even proves that.
All right. Thank you. Yep, thank you, sir.
Been waiting.
Yep. All right, so at this time, I'll go ahead and we'll call, call for the vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, this should go before city council, and Erin, can you remind me which meeting?
Probably the first one in February, February 13th.
Thank you, February 13th. And with that, we will move on to agenda item number five, council update. We have a updated liaison with the new year. Kevin?
Were you guys gonna talk about, I saw your email regarding officers, did that get on the agenda, or what?
This, this was, there was some discussion about it. There seems to be some discrepancy about when it should be done, so I did not press the issue about electing a new chair. My feeling, and just to answer everybody's question, I asked about it because I thought it should have been on the agenda, but I was informed by Erin that it has happened either in January or February. There hasn't been a specific date to have that done, and in the ordinance, there is nothing specific that states when that should happen. My personal feeling is that it should happen, well, Erin's thought was that since our terms don't end until January 31st, that it should happen after that. My, my initial feeling was that it should happen at the first meeting at the beginning of the year, but I was not going to press the issue, and so therefore I didn't, I didn't contest the agenda for this evening.
Just wanted to ask, once I got copy. My name's Kevin Lewis, and my city council meeting update is very brief. The highlights were the restoration of the public forum as it used to be constituted within the meeting and with, without such a tight, tight time limit on it, and that was very interesting, exciting. And the other major event of the night was Mr. Berg completing his six-month probationary period, and we all celebrated that, so. Otherwise, it was fairly small business, actually, and after the council meeting, we went into the Housing and Redevelopment Authority and elected officers and stuff like that, so it was pretty, pretty quick.
Great, thank you for the update.
Thank you, Kevin.
Moving on to 5.1, other business. I wanted to put this on tonight because I have two, two points I just wanted to make. First and foremost, I wanted to give recognition to Karen for her time here, served on the planning and zoning. It was noted that she was not reappointed to her position, so again, I want to thank you for your time here. With that, I did write just a little something saying, I, you know, again, volunteering one's time and energy to city work can be very overwhelming, and it does take a lot of energy. In your time here, I've watched you do an amazing job in, you know, in, excuse me, you've, in the time you've been here, you've shown professionalism, attentiveness, the ability to see topics regardless of your personal views, which is a trait that I do believe all commission, committee, and council members should embody and strive for. With that, again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tanner.
Thank you. The only other part I will say, and then if anyone else wants to say anything as well, can do so after this, but also in light of recent discussions at council meetings, I do want to encourage all city-related committee members and engaged residents to come and speak at the next public forum, specifically in regards to the discussion that they've been having to disallow the commissions to have a say in the selection process of its members, you know, the attempt to remove the ability to self-govern, excuse me, self-govern and the respected commissions and have the opportunity to provide global viewpoints on topics that come before the entire city. In a time when residents have recently voted for integrity and transparency, I find it extremely reviewing, excuse me, revealing that the new direction of the city council is making choices based on their own personal relationships with individuals, whether it be positive or negative. So if you have feelings towards city council taking away the ability for the respected commissions to at least have a, at least a say, even though the final decision is not ours and we are all advisory committee, or, excuse me, advisory groups, we are all made up of different residences, and whether we agree with each other or not, I know I can openly say in my, again, 10-plus years in planning and zoning and being involved in the city, I have, although I don't always agree, I've always felt I have done a good job of respecting my peers, and I have openly tried to, or be open-minded to the viewpoints of others and make sure that I'm making at least my decisions based on the best of my ability with respect to others' opinions and what the residents are calling for, as well as what the law calls for in our code and in our ordinances. So with that, that, I just wanted to make that comment, and again, encourage anyone listening or watching or in attendance, again, please, at the next public forum, come and speak your mind if you have an opinion on it, I think it's important that the council hears that. So, thank you very much for your time.
I just want to second what he said about Karen. It's been a pleasure. It's been really nice working with you here, and I just hope to see you on other committees and around the city, and thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
I'd like to comment, because this is new to me, that council would go in that direction, and I've been on planning and zoning since 1997, and we, meeting once a month, we get to know who contributes what and how their chemistry is in terms of conducting a thorough, fair, and harmonious meeting. So to disregard our recommendation, especially on somebody who's been serving wonderfully well and has not created any problems that I'm aware of, it's baffling to me. And so I just wanted to put that on record, that I don't understand or agree with the council's direction in this matter.
I would just say that it's very unfortunate that our liaison was not in the room when the comments were made, and I would hope that you would, would review the meeting minutes and, and as much as possible to, to see what was said. And I also commend Karen. All of us are such different personalities, and it's a good balance, and so you're gonna be missed.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we still see you in attendance.
I'll be around.
Please do.
Is there anybody else?
I'll hold my remarks for after.
I, I appreciate that Karen's an intelligent and good person, and it vexes. And it vexes me, it really does. But, uh, what's, what this is about?
I'm sorry, can I, can I ask real quick? I, I don't mean to interrupt, but just so I'm clear, what, what vexes you at the moment?
This whole situation, that it went this way.
That the outcome was what it was?
I don't understand what the disagreement between Jim and Karen is. I don't get the enmity between them. But it cropped up in a, on a couple of occasions, coming from Karen toward him. And it just seemed really inappropriate. When you're a, when you're a sitting member of an advisory body to the City Council, taking shots at members of the City Council publicly, not privately, but publicly, just seems so out of order to me. And it would be the same as if we were taking shots at you guys personally. Not, not about, you know, wish you would show up more often or that kind of thing, but when it's a personal shot. And, uh, you know, in retrospect, it made me very sad, this whole process, and, uh, I hope that we can unwrap, and maybe it's just a brief timeout, and, and that we can, uh, get things back on track. That's how I actually feel about the whole thing.
For the record, Mr. Lewis, specifically, what is the shot that I took at Jim?
You called him a liar. And I was there, I heard it. And that was in front of a lot of people.
And when was this?
And meet the candidates, and the night I was sworn into the City Council.
Mr. Councilman, I have a question for you. I understand, you know, how you, you may feel when somebody says something bad about you or one of, one of your fellow council members. But my question is, is does, does, I mean, where does it, where does it stop? Because, it matters a great deal as to where and when somebody makes a comment. So, um, you know, you were saying that, 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 you know, she said something that was derogatory towards, um, one of the council members in, in a framework that was, um, not as her official duties as a, as a committee member, but as a resident of East Bethel. So therefore, here's, here's, here's the gist of my question. Will you remove me from this committee? Because I may have said something that was not nice to one of, uh, your fellow members? Or if somebody says something on Facebook that is not, you know, nice? Because, you know, this has happened many times in the past, and it continues to this day, where people will make comments, um, that are not, um, complimentary, um, to people who are on, on, on City Council. And, um, I think, I think, I think the question has to be asked, you know, who and what is next? Because, um, I have never heard Karen in her official capacity as a committee member ever say anything bad about the council, either in its current or previous, um, um, structure in her official capacity. And, and so therefore, you know, uh, am I next? Is Tanner Belfany next because he ran against you? Or maybe one of the other, uh, committee members? Are, are they on the chopping block for, 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 for the council if, if we may say something that, that we have a concern about? In other words, if I come up at the next council meeting during the open forum and I start mentioning something that, that, you know, is a great concern to me, are you gonna take that personally and, and take, really, from my standpoint, looks like retribution? And, um, you know, there's, there's been other members, um, in the past who have made comments that were against City Council while they were members of a committee. And I, I, I think that, that in itself would be, um, an acceptable form of that's not acceptable. And I know that, that, that the same thing has been said about some things that people have said on Facebook, that, you know, how they've been treated. And I personally feel that, you know, in the past, council has made other decisions, specifically against Jim Smith and Gratitude Farms, that were not properly handled, um, by the City Council. Did they have the right to do that?
Can I respond at some point?
Yeah, I just.
Cause I can't remember all, all the things you're saying.
Well, the basic gist is, I guess, is, uh.
I don't mean any offense, I mean, literally, I can't remember that much.
I guess the basic gist is, where does it stop? And, you know, I mean, if, if, if it's gonna happen to one of our members, that you're gonna take something out on, who else is next? I mean.
That's, that's, you, you're phrasing it wrong. Take something out, it's something personal. It's not 'cause of you anything she said about me.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
We're all, we're all adults.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's not about me, it's about Jim Smith.
Well, then why isn't he the one who's, 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 who's making this concern?
But, but you're saying, if I could, Mr. Lewis, you're, but you're saying it, it is your opinion, and when you first came up to respond, that it was your feeling based on your experiences in relation to a fellow, to a ca- fellow candidate at the time? And you're making, you're making an accusation that she openly lied? And if I hold on, let me, if I could finish.
That's not, no, you're misstating it.
If, if I could finish my sentence, please. You made the statement tonight that she lied about.
No, I didn't. I never said that.
Did I miss your, I'm sorry.
That she called Jim a liar.
He said that I called Jim Smith a liar.
That's a big difference.
And that's fine, and I, and I apologize for misunderstanding, and I appreciate the clarification.
That's the key right there. What you just said is the key.
For what I just said. But what my point was going to be, was that if I recall, remember, which again, as we all know, I make mistakes too. But if I remember the meet the candidates correctly, there was never a direct accusation that she called Jim Smith a liar. She just asked a general question of all the candidates, that if there was a characteristic, and I'll just say a characteristic of an individual, that would lead to lying, if that was a trait of someone that you would agree with to be on City Council. That's all I was trying to say, is that she did not call him a liar, and therefore, that's why I interpreted you as saying she lied. Because she didn't, she made it a comment based on a situation.
What about the City Council meeting, public forum, the night I was sworn in? I think it was November 14th.
I can't speak to that, 'cause I wasn't in attendance.
I will speak to that, because I have remarks on that.
I wanna, I wanna respond to Randy and you, if I might.
Please.
There's one thing, we're all adults. I don't know about you guys, I make mistakes all the time. I'm really good at saying I'm sorry sincerely, because I do, I have to do it all the time. And most people are outspoken or like that. You, you trip over yourself knowing that. And I'm, I've thought afterward, I wish that maybe I'd given it more thought or something, and, and I wasn't angry or anything else, but we have to have a decorum with each other. You, you can't say, okay, now I'm a council member, or now I'm a commit- planning commission member, but if I go and sit in that chair, then I'm just a citizen, and I don't have any of, of, you know, official connection to the city. It doesn't work like that. You know, if you wanna do things privately, that's fine. But you're representing the city, whether you're wearing your badge that you're on the planning commission or not. And we have to have a certain decorum with each other. And, you know, I, uh, I think it really begins with, and I gave Karen, I asked Karen last night, I only asked you one question. And I was thinking afterward, I should've done a follow-up, because these rules we have on the public forum right now, which preclude things like not engage in dialogue with a presenter, it's not to be making political endorsements or political campaigns, not to make personal attacks. These are the rules for the public forum. Well, certainly, they apply to all of us with each other. And with the residents.
Yes, but it, but as, but as a resident, regardless of a committee, commission, or council position, if you have a concern, or in, from my perspective, if, you know, again, that question was asked generally. The, the interpretation of you, and it sounds like Jim Smith, is that she made that accusation at said individual. Jim Smith's name was never implied, but I can tell you that, as the individual city.
Implied?
Huh?
It was never implied?
It was never said in that.
You just said implied.
No, I'm saying you're implying it.
No.
I didn't imply that it was me when the question was asked. The question was just asked. So to, but your opening statement when you came back here was that she called Jim a liar. And she didn't. She asked that if there was a candidate.
We can dance around it and mince it all up, but.
Go back and watch the video, Kevin. Nowhere do I say the word liar, and I did not call Jim Smith out at meet the candidates.
Well, if I'm mistaken, I will apologize to you publicly.
Because I listened to that entire video.
What I asked you last night was, since you made, you know, negative comments about Jim Smith publicly, would you be, be willing to apologize? Same applies to me.
I said I have nothing to apologize for.
That's exactly what you said last night.
Exactly.
Yes, and I respectfully disagree.
And in a moment, I will share exactly what I said the night you were sworn in as well.
Well, that's, that, you can't really say that's exact, because they don't transcribe exactly.
With that being said, Karen, I believe you have something to say.
I first wanted to say that it has been a privilege and an honor to serve my city alongside a very competent and diverse planning commission members. People from different backgrounds and experiences, ages, and good mix of male and female colleagues, all of whom deserve to be here and demonstrate they all care about our city and use sound judgment-making decisions. I especially want to thank Tanner for his exceptional leadership and mentorship for both myself and Gabriel, our newest, youngest member. We need more engaged youthful citizens. At my company Prairie Care, our core values are integrity, compassion, and determination. And those are values that I live every day, both in my personal and professional life. As many of you know, tonight is my last meeting with my term ending on the 31st. And even though my fellow commissioners unanimously voted to approve my second term, our new council members, Mr. Lewis, Miller, and Smith, voted to not approve my reappointment. Their decision was not based on what I'd done on planning. Their decision, Lewis stated, was due to comments I made to various council members when I asked questions at meet the candidates and later at public forum. So for those who don't know, well, obviously, we all know now that this is my last night, but, um, at the meet the candidates forum, I asked the first question, after hearing opening remarks, I asked all the candidates to explain what they thought the role of City Council was and why they were qualified. My second question was after hearing the words integrity, transparency, really important, that were really meaningful, that they felt all the candidates need to have. I asked the question that if someone was kicked off, one of the committees or, um, council for their deeds, words, and actions, should they be, um, allowed to run for council? Nowhere did I say Mr. Smith. Did I imply it? Sure. It also could've applied to Ms. Urkel based on censure, as well as Shelley Beck, but I did not call out any names. I was very professional in that. The night that you were sworn in, Mr. Lewis, my message, more or less, was that I listened to responses during the questions at meet the candidates. And that despite what you said about integrity, how it matters, and that anyone running for council needs to be held to higher standard, you, Mr. Lewis, chose to align yourself with another candidate who has demonstrated he lacked professionalism and does not understand what integrity is, and was kicked off planning commission for his behavior. I further urge any new council members to start with a clean slate, have an open mind, listen to all the residents and businesses, not just those disenfranchised few, because even they have neighbors who matter too. Get all the facts, learn your role, read your packets, make sure you're fully comprehensive and understand the information and implications before you, and make decis- decisions accordingly. To be positive and proactive. And to be a voice for all within legal ramifications of our city codes and confines of the new leadership roles. And I reminded you all that you're being held to higher standard. And I hope that all new incoming council members would prove that of the residents who voted, that they voted wisely, and you would remember respect and the respect of others. So, and last night, you once again demonstrated and vocalized that you kind of have your own agenda. But whatever, um, and when you asked me to apologize to Mr. Smith, to be reconsidered, to be reappointed, I have nothing to apologize for. Not once did I call Jim Smith a liar. I stated the fact of the July 26, 21 meeting, the night he was kicked off planning for his deeds, words, and actions. So I wish all of you luck on planning. Let's hope there's a lot more good people out there that are willing to get involved and throw their hat in the ring for my now-open seat. Thank you.
Thank you again, and for your clarification with all of it. Anyone have anything else to say? Second, so moved. Second, meeting adjourned.